Good evening. I would like to call the order of the January 11th, 2016 Belbrook City Council Meeting. For... Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Form of approval of the city council meeting minutes of December 14th, 2015. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written.
As we start a new year, we also have to start with a new deputy mayor and committee assignments. So, we need to have a quick discussion. We didn't have a workshop on this like we usually do. So, I guess the first question is, does anyone want to change committees? I think we're sort of going into it that everyone is content with the committees they're on. So, that's the first question. Does anyone on council want to change committees? Because we will have to make a motion to appoint committee members, correct? Mr. Schlagheck?
And also for these regional agencies, if there's any changes to those, like the regional planning commissions or the museum?
That's correct. So, let me look at here. So, just so we all know, Belbruck River Creek Chamber of Commerce, Mrs. Middlestetter, Green County Department of Development is Mark and I. Green County Regional Planning Commission is Donna and I. Donna's the delegate. I'm the alternate. Mayors and managers, of course, that's me and Mark. Mine Valley Regional Planning is me and Mark. Museum Board is Elaine Middlestetter. Solid Waste Advisory Committee is the city manager and staff. Wastewater Committee is Mark Schlagheck. Firefighters dependency fund is Mike Schweller. Then on the committees, Finance and Audits, Mr. Schweller, Mr. Edwards, and Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Safety is... And the chair of that is Mike Schweller. Chair on Safety is Forrest Greenwood, John Martin, Elaine Middlestetter. Community Affairs is Elaine Middlestetter. Chair, Nick Edwards, John Martin. And Services, Donna Seager-Lawson, Chair. Forrest Greenwood and Mike Schweller. Does anyone want to change any of those? If seeing none, I guess we might as well go ahead and make a...
Motion to approve those?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the council committees for 2015?
Mayor, one item I wanted to ask. For the Chamber of Commerce, do we need an alternate on that?
I don't think that they've requested one. It's just they just wanted a representative from the council and the trustee, so there's not...
You're more than welcome to go to any of them. I am always there anyway, usually. Or not always. I'm about there 60, 70% of the time, but you're more than welcome. And Mark's almost always there, too.
Okay.
They wanted liaison on the board.
On the board.
Yeah.
So, I'm actually on the board.
She's on the board.
And now I'm secretary, so I...
Yeah. And I think technically, I'm still on the board, too, so...
Okay.
But, just a question. You're more than welcome to come. Any other questions?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the committee assignments as they are laid out on this sheet. Is that the best way to do it?
And then I went through. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson for the approval of the 2016 council committee assignments, seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Next, I sort of flipped them, is the deputy mayor. I know Mr. Schweller's been the deputy mayor for some time now. We have not talked about this at all. So, the first question is, Mr. Schweller, would you still like to be deputy mayor?
Please to serve as deputy mayor.
Thank you. Would anyone else have any questions or concerns or interest?
I think he makes a good deputy mayor.
I think he makes a good deputy mayor and a very good...
Three times I've had to do it again.
Yeah. Yeah. You have... Well, you know, occasionally I have to have, you know, I have conflicts of interest. Seeing that, may I have a motion to appoint Mike Schweller as deputy mayor?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Martin to appoint Mike... Mr. Schweller as deputy mayor, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Obstein.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. That is...
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mike.
No, thank you.
You did a great job. That's it for committee assignments. That sets us up for 2016. And we will be moving on. Mayor's announcements and special guests. We have one announcement and special guest this evening. I'd like to first introduce Police Chief Goddery. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have the honor of swearing in a new part-time police officer to our ranks. We are here to swear in Jamie Johnson as a new part-time police officer with us. Here with Jamie tonight is his wife Stacy, his father Paul, his brother-in-law Jason, and his friend Richard England. So, appreciate you guys being here to support him. As you know, the policeman's badge is a symbol... It's a symbol of authority given to us and to him tonight by the state of Ohio and followed and respected by the community that he serves. The badge is a link of trust and authority. The bond's the community and the officer. So, I'll have Jamie come up, please. Mayor?
Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for your service. And I am going to do the oath... Cannot talk tonight. The oath of office. I also like your haircut.
Thank you.
Very nice. Mine's a little long right now. So, if you could, would you step over here and please raise your right hand. I, Jamie P. Johnson...
Jamie P. Johnson.
solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the state of Ohio...
State of Ohio.
And will obey...
And will obey.
The laws thereof...
The laws thereof.
And that I will...
And that I will.
In all respects...
In all respect.
...upholding and enforcing...
Upholding and enforcing.
...the provisions of the Charter...
The provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of Belbrook...
And the ordinances of Belbrook.
And will faithfully discharge...
And faithfully discharge.
The duties...
The duties.
...of the office upon...
Of the office upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. And I will just need to stick it. What is the date?
The 11th.
Thank you very much, Officer Johnson. Very nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Don't stick it too hard.
And the last thing, time-honored tradition is to have the officer's better half pin the badge onto his ear.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Johnson.
Welcome, Jamie.
And once again, I would like to thank now Officer Johnson for taking on this job. This is one of the tougher jobs I think we have in our country today. It's with everything going on. I have a lot of respect for all the police officers, so thank you very much. Moving on, ordinances, none this evening. Resolutions, we have three of them this evening. Cannot talk this evening. We have three. Resolution 2016-A. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2016-A, a resolution authorizing the city manager slash finance director to file with the county auditor requests for advances of taxes collected. Whereas the Green County treasurer is in the process of collecting property taxes for 2016, and whereas tax settlements will return to the city those taxes collected for police, fire, general, and police pension funds, and whereas these settlements will not be ready in final form until after a significant amount of taxes are collected, and whereas such advances of taxes provide the city with a percentage of taxes already collected which can then be expended by the city. Now, therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the city manager slash finance director is hereby authorized to request advances of taxes in the amount authorized by the Green County Auditor at those times during 2015 when sufficient taxes have been collected. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Other than that, I should say 2016 instead of 2015 in that Section 1 there.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is an annual resolution that we passed that allows us... The property tax bills will go out here probably in the next couple of weeks. They'll start collecting them. We would not actually receive the money until March or April, so this allows us to get it as it comes in. We get it in advance. We can get that cash in our bank account sooner. So, this is just the authorization that's needed for the county auditor to take care of that.
Do we have any questions regarding Resolution 2016-A? May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-A?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2016-A with the change in Section 1, changing that from 2015 to 2016.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt Resolution 2016-A, a resolution authorizing the city manager slash finance director to file with the county auditor request for advances of taxes collected, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have two more resolutions to go, and I believe Mr. Edwards may have to...
Yes, Mayor, I'll have to recuse myself from discussions on both the resolutions as one of them refers to my employer and banking relationship, so I will recuse myself and come back.
We will come get you. We'll try not to forget. I know I've done that before. So, moving on, we have, as we said, two resolutions. Resolution 2016-B. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A resolution designating a public depositor, Key Bank National Association, of active and interim deposits of the city of Belbrook. Whereas Key Bank National Association is eligible for designation as public depositor of active and interim inactive deposits of the city, and whereas it is the determination of council that the bank may be designated as depositor for the active and interim funds of the city, with such designation to be confirmed by the execution of a depository agreement with the city, and whereas state law authorizes the granting of depository agreements for a period of up to five years. Now, therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that Key Bank National Association is hereby designated as official depositor for the active and interim funds of the city of Belbrook pursuant to Section 135.10 of the Ohio Revised Code and subject to the execution of a formal depository agreement. Section 2, that the depository agreement will be in effect from February 1st, 2016 until February 1st, 2021. Section 3, that upon the execution of depository agreement, the director of finance is hereby authorized to deposit active and interim funds for the city and said bank. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Mr. Schlagheck?
Yes, the city has a banking relationship with Key Bank. We have for a number of years, but to have that relationship requires a depository agreement that cannot exceed a period of five years. So, this one will grant for another five years. We last passed it in 2011. The next resolution is similar. It's with Huntington National Bank. Huntington and Key Bank are the two banks that have branches within the city. We've chosen to do business with them, primarily with Key Bank over the years, but we've done some business with Huntington, too. So, this will authorize us, at least for the period of five years, to do business with those two banks. If something else comes up, we can always add another depository agreement, but at this point, that's what we're recommending.
And why do we have two banks?
Just different offerings that they may have. Most of our deposits go to Key Bank, but over time Huntington has had investment opportunities that may be at a higher rate, things like that, that we've had money with them for those reasons.
So, both this one and the next resolution are just renewals of ones we already had?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions for the city manager? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-B?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution 2016-B designating a public depositor, Key Bank National Association, for active and interim deposits of the city of Belbrook.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Martin to adopt Resolution 2016-B, a resolution designating a public depositor, Key Bank National Association, of active and interim deposits of the city of Belbrook, seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. One last resolution, Resolution 2016-C. Mrs. Lawson?
Should we get Nick or does he have to stay out on this?
No. So, we got one more to go.
Oh. Resolution designating... Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution number 2016-C, a resolution designating a public depositor, Huntington National Bank, of active and interim deposits of the city of Belbrook. Whereas Huntington National Bank is eligible for designation as a public depositor of active and interim inactive deposits of the city, and whereas it is in the determination of council that the bank may be designated as a depositor for the active and interim funds of the city, with such designation to be confirmed by the execution of a depository agreement with the city, and whereas state law authorizes the granting of depository agreements for a period of up to five years. Now, therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that Huntington National Bank is hereby designated as official depositor for the active and interim funds for the city of Belbrook pursuant to Section 135.10 of the Ohio Revised Code and subject to the execution of a formal depository agreement. Section 2, that the depository agreement will be in effect from February 1st, 2016 until February 1st, 2021. Section 3, that upon execution of depository agreement, the director of finance is hereby authorized to deposit active and interim funds of the city and said bank. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
That's the second depository that we use.
If you've already heard our explanation, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-C?
I move that we adopt Resolution number 2016-C.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to adopt Resolution 2016-C, a resolution designating a public depositor, Huntington National Bank, of active and interim deposits of the city of Belbrook, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Now we can hit him.
Now we can hit him.
Moving on, we have a city manager's report this evening.
Yes, a few items this evening. First, just to give council a little update on what we're going to have at the upcoming meetings. I know that usually after the year ends, we come back with a lot of review of what happened in 2015. So, at the next meeting in January, we'll have a review of the waste collection, property tax rates, and zoning and property maintenance statistics. At the first meeting in February, we'll talk about the water review and discuss about whether there needs to be an increase or whether we'll keep it the same. And then also at that meeting, the police department annual report will be provided. And then at the second meeting in February, the fire department annual report will be given. So, over the next several meetings, we'll have a review of what's happened over the past year and what we can look forward to for the coming year. The service department, this weekend was probably the first time they had to break out their new truck and get the salt and do all those things, and then they're expecting more tonight, so they're ready to do what needs to be done. They've been itching to get out there on the road. They've had a pretty mild winter up until this point, so they're ready and able to get out there and take care of the streets. The Bicentennial Committee continues to meet. Their next meeting is next Monday night. They were supposed to meet this evening, but they moved it to next Monday night, so they continue to meet in planning for the bicentennial celebration. This afternoon, I met with Rick Robertson, who does Fan Stop. They've done a mock-up of a street banner that we're going to have. It looks very good. We'll talk about that with the committee, but we're going to do those just in the downtown area. There'll probably be 20 to 25 of those, but we'll have those up pretty much from April through August. But then after that, once we have the hardware in place, it's probably something that we'll start doing for the city itself, and we'll talk in the future about what we want to do, what we want to have on those banners going forward. So, that will be moving forward. But if anyone wants to attend the bicentennial, it's next Monday at 7:00, down in the community room, down on the first floor here. And then finally, we recently had a full-time firefighter take another position with the city of Dayton, so we will be soon be advertising a position for a full-time firefighter. Obviously, we have some part-time firefighters that are interested in that, but we're going to advertise that to make sure that we get the best candidate for that position. So, if anyone is interested, they should be watching our website for that advertisement here in the near future.
Does anyone have any questions for our city manager this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. We'll first start with service.
Nothing tonight.
Safety?
No reports tonight.
Finance and audit?
Mayor, just like to comment, Mark sent out a summary of the city's financial status for 12/31/15, and I'm sure we'll talk more about some of the components of it, but effectively revenues were up over 2014, which is a good thing, and our expenditures were less than the 2015 budget, so I think that's also a good thing. So, I think we're kind of in some tough times of tracking pretty well, and we got a considerable amount of our capital projects closed out and everything in 2015, so there's not a lot of carryover items. So, I think we're in good shape to wrap up 2015 and get started on 2016.
Yes.
Moving on, community affairs. Reappointment of board members.
Yes, we have a number of board members who are current and just we're looking at reappointing. Historical museum board of trustees, Donna Gibson and Janice Stratus, both January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2019. Board of zoning appeals, Sharon Schroeder, February 1st, 2016 through January 31st, 2021. Planning board, David Van Veltheisen, January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2020. And we've Village Review Board, Scott Carlson, February 1st, 2016 through January 31st, 2019.
Wonderful. So, we will need a motion. May I have a motion to appoint those members to those particular boards?
I move that we reappoint all these members to their respective boards.
May I have a second?
I will second.
John?
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to reappoint the board members, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Do we have any openings on any boards?
Yes, actually, I was going to say that during the follow-up, that I... We need two people for the Village... Old Village Review Board now. We have one vacant seat and one just became vacant.
Do they have specific requirements?
One of those seats needs to be an Old Village resident. The second one...
There is no restriction.
I don't think there's any restriction on the second one.
All right.
So...
Wonderful. That board hasn't historically met a lot lately, but it is important to have that board full. We recently did have an issue where we only had four members...
Four members.
And the vote was a tie. So, that was a problem. So, if anyone is interested out there, please contact Jamie and the city at 848-4666 if you show have any interest. So, anything else?
Most of their meetings, by the way, are... A lot of their work is done by email, so there's not a lot of meetings required.
I think there's an opening on the museum board also, I believe.
Oh, yes. That's right. It just came up. Depristate, Nissen.
Yes, because, yeah, somebody did not want to be reappointed, so there's an opening there.
So, there is an opening on the museum board.
Yes.
All right. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Then moving on, is there any old business this evening? New business? Mr. Schweller?
Yes, Mayor. Tonight, we had an executive session to review the performance of the city manager, and based on that review and based on his performance, I would like to make a motion that we provide him with a 3.5% salary increase effective as soon as 1-1-16, whatever makes the most sense for you. And also, we award him with a 6% merit bonus.
Thank you very much. And then we had met and had an executive session. I think we all agree that we've got a very good city manager, and we're in a very unique situation that Mr. Schlagheck not only is our finance director, but is a city manager, too. There's not too many individuals that have the skills that he has, coming from Centerville as a finance director, being an MBA CPA. So, we get a very, very good deal putting both of those together. So, I would like to thank Mark for his service this year, and I agree with what council and we have proposed. So, with that, I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
And then a second.
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 Motion by Mr. Schweller to award the city manager a 3.5% pay increase effective January 1st, 2016, along with a 6% merit bonus, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Is there any other new business this evening? Open discussion.
I would just like to thank our residents who have volunteered and continue to volunteer on our boards. It's, you know, it's very refreshing to see our, our citizens wanting to get involved in things that go on in the committee, in the, in the city, and that, um, you know, a lot of this stuff is important work. It needs to get done. We wouldn't get it done without our volunteers.
Thank you very much. And I agree.
I want to reiterate the same thing. Some of these boards are kind of, you know, it's a little bit tough to serve on them. They, uh, come up with some issues sometimes that, you know, you get, you have to put a lot of thought into them, and, um, they can be a little intense. But I really appreciate the people that do serve on the boards, and they do a real good job. That's why I thank them. That's all I got.
Mr. Martin.
Um, I just wanted to mention with, uh, with the winter season upon us, probably the first snowfall of any noticeable amount's gonna be tonight. I know we've had salt on the road maybe once. Probably the first scraping this season. So if people can really be mindful of where you park and try your best to, to stay off of the, the roads in terms of, you know, park up in your driveway and let the roads be clear, and that's gonna let the plows do their job, and you're not gonna come out with a giant mound of frozen snow over the top of your car because he didn't have anywhere else to put it. So just wanted to remind people of that.
I'll just echo the sentiments presented previously.
I was gonna say the same thing that John just said, so. I don't have anything new.
Okay. Mr. Schweller.
Nothing, uh, to report this evening, except I hope the forecasters are wrong when we don't get the snow.
Yes, exactly.
Yes. I would like to welcome our new police officer, our new part-time officer. I, uh, it, I think in sort of today's time and environment that that is a very difficult job to do, so I appreciate his service. Um, and that's really all I have. And this is open now to the public. Louie? He's shaking his head no. Um, I do see three Boy Scouts in our audience this evening, and it's customary for you guys to come up and want you to just tell us real briefly what your name is and what you guys are here doing this evening. And also, we, uh... All, come on.